Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City Development Planning Board meeting for January 10th, 2018, 7:00. With us tonight, if you could just introduce yourselves.
Roger Lusard.
Jim Barkhouse.
Darryl Wilson.
John DeLeo.
So, just for information, we have four members on the board sitting tonight, so we have a core and we can conduct our business. There is an even number of members on the board, so any vote that results in a tie is considered a denial. Any of the applicants that are before us, they're concerned about that, they can choose not to participate in this meeting tonight and come back at a later time when there's more people where the rules are slightly different. I just have to say that for the record, that's part of the rules. We have several items on the agenda tonight. One of them has been withdrawn, item five, it's crossed out on your agenda if you have a copy of that. So we'll be doing the other ones in the order that they're presented. The first item of business is the adoption of the minutes from a site visit that we had October 25th at Woodlawn Museum Visitor Center. I read the minutes, and I actually have a correction that I'd like to propose. It's in the very last full paragraph that starts with "The board was able to see." The next sentence after that is "The barn is being destroyed by powder post beetles, which are slowing, transforming the wood." It should be slowly transforming the wood into a powder. The beetles are not slowing anything. In fact, so I'd just like to propose that correction to those minutes. Is there a motion regarding those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. The next thing, the next two items, I'm gonna lump them together as a single motion and ask if there's a motion regarding those two sets of minutes from the other site visits, November 29th and December 6th.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so those minutes have been adopted, and those were specifically for site visits that we had done for other projects. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Modification to September 5th, 2012, approved and recorded major subdivision plan and reapproval of a non-established Lath's major use site development plan titled Beckworth Pines for Down East Main Property Management. The approved plan consists of two four-unit apartment buildings, and proposed modification is for four two-unit apartment buildings located on a 2.3 acre parcel off of Route 3, High Street via Beckworth Court, tax map lot 16/47-3 in the commercial zone. Is there someone here representing the applicant?
Yes, sir. Chairman Lance Sebeyer, representing White, and Leah Belina, what special engineer who did all the engineering.
Thank you, welcome.
Can you, may I say something? Can we remind the client that we are restarting?
Do you want me to describe that now?
Yeah, just to remind everybody, and in the audience, there's a lot of people I think that would be pleased to hear that we're doing that.
Okay, so let me just describe something for your benefit, and before we get started. Normally, the application process consists of applications being brought in, looked at, reviewed. There'll be a public meeting about the application, and the first determination that the board makes is about completeness. There's no value judgment about the plan, there's no detail, you know, how does this work? It's just about, is there a complete plan here? Are there any parts missing? That's typically the first meeting that the planning board has, and there's a determination of completeness that comes out of that. The next part, which is typically a second meeting, although they have been done together at a single meeting before, is that we make a judgment and a final determination. This is where we look at sort of the quality of the plan, any individual issues that we find that are, you know, the plan's already been deemed complete, and then we dig into the details. So that's the second part of the plan, and so on the agenda, you'll see that there's an A and a B. The first A is about completeness, and the next part, B, is about defining and facts and conclusion. It's sort of the final part of the approval. So what you're gonna see tonight is that we're gonna have that first part about completeness, and we're gonna open things up for the public and have some comment, and then we're gonna close that part and move on to this final determination.
So you're going to redo what you've already done, because you've already done that?
Yeah, and I'll describe why in just a second. So then, we're gonna do those two parts tonight, so that's why they're gonna be two pieces of public meeting. And so the reason that we did that is because we did review this plan before, and we made a determination of completeness, but quite a few things changed. There were things that were gonna require some waivers that have been provided, there's actually been an ordinance change in the city that deals with another item that was on that. So instead of trying to go back through that completeness part again, we're just gonna restart the process. So that's what you're gonna see, that's our understanding of it.
Okay, so I'm going to have to add something, Mr. Chairman. The reason I'm asking for the restart at A is mostly because when we, when you, when we sent notices, Butters to notices, notices to Butters, what happened is that the system we used did not capture a property correctly. So the property where the condos exist, it only captured the land, it did not capture the 10 units that are there. So the notice to Butters was done, but not to the actual homeowners. So when that came to my attention, I contacted, one of the homeowners that's here tonight called that morning, and there was a realization immediately that something had gone wrong. So we contacted the lawyer and had a discussion with him, and the lawyer recommended that we do what's presented here tonight, that we basically add of respect and make sure that everybody's heard correctly, that we redo the completeness review, and then we can follow, and if it all goes well, you can follow up with the final. Should something go wrong, you could stop, and you could ask them to come back another month. But expecting that everything's gonna go well, you could follow immediately with the final approval. I did speak to, I had a chance to definitely explain that, I think, to the Butters, and I think that it was explained, it's clearly a problem in which with the system, and we do apologize, it was not intentional. Since then, we have been working with the Butters via, and the applicant has worked with the Butters with us via a meeting that we had between the client, his team, and the Butters to just discuss things in general, plus to discuss things that may not be appropriate to discuss at the planning board. So I just wanna make sure that we're clear on the record on what happened, and obviously it was not intentional, but that's truly what's going on here.
Okay, thank you for that background. So to the applicant, then, I guess the best approach would be to just pretend like we haven't talked yet. That would be the, because there are people here that didn't have a chance to hear that first determination of completeness, let's just assume that we're going through this again. So, please, what do you have for us?
We have the development I described in the form, two apartment buildings. They've already been approved once, what we've done is update it, new regulations for stormwater and some of the other items, and then we, in doing this, we've also found a handful of other things which needed to be specified in different fashions, the water lines, sewer liners, you mentioned about the council had just done a judgment on something. Those things are mentioned on this plan. And it's been gone through before, you people have seen it before. I guess I think, and of course, Alina's here with the engineering questions, if you have any, so whatever you may have for questions.
Okay, thank you. What, what questions does the board have for the applicant?
I have a question for the city. What was changed with the sewer lines? I don't, I was reading part of it, and I thought we were gonna be doing a variance or an easement or something to that. I'm just wondering how that meeting went, and what is okayed?
Okay, so what was okayed is a variation from a certain section of the sewer ordinance, which is basically the ability to hook two separate properties on the same private sewer line. So the idea in this case is that, this was a project dating back from 1973, which was presented back then as a two-phase project, and at that point, that utility was brought in across private property via 10-foot easement. That 10-foot easement was clearly intended to have a phase two, it was presented as a two-phase project, as I said, and not only was it presented as a two-phase project, there was an extension of that line, and it was stopped to provide for an extension. Then we fast forward to about two years ago, the project was represented to the city by a different prospective owner, and was approved with that 10-foot sewer line without, by hooking to, by doing that, I mean regardless of what happened. So we get the, the project lapses, we get it back, and we, I'm not sure if there was a difference in ownership or whatever, but we realized, staff-wise, that whoops, you know, someone pays a bit more attention, I guess, that you can't do that, that you're violating an ordinance. What could be done is you could have two people, but the city would have to turn that line, accept that line, and be a public line.
Be a public line, okay.
For the city to have a public line, we need the ability to enter with equipment to maintain or repair that line if there needs to do that. In a 10-foot easement, you can rest assured that we're going to do damage to either side and something, you know, we're gonna end up either giving restitution or fixing or whatever they do in that case. Due to the special circumstances of that project, and the fact that there was no impact to the health, safety, and welfare of the, to the municipality, the council has accepted that there be an exception made to that portion of the ordinance, allowing in this specific case, with some conditions, that the applicant be allowed to hook into that private line. That, this has been immortalized in a memo, and I'm not sure if the neighbors were aware of that or not, but the applicant will need to do considerable footwork to be able to avail himself of that exception, namely, they need to make sure that the line is in good, is adequate, it's not perforated by roots or other things that may impact it. I'm not a sewer person, of course, and then they also going to have to demonstrate that they have an agreement between the condo association and that the Beckworth Pines and the Beckworth Court, I guess it's called, to make sure that they're ready to handle that line, as two parties on the same line, and they know what's gonna happen if there's a break to that line, and they know who's gonna be responsible to fix it, namely, in the event that there's a break, people have a tendency to call the city, and we have a tendency to respond because we're not gonna let people have sewer backups. But in this case, it's clear that they have to make arrangements to be able to handle that ahead of time.
Okay, so the ordinance was changed to allow this exception?
So it happened to this, a month ago, we went to the council to do an amendment to the ordinance to allow this. It was resent to staff because they want the council to be able to make the decision, not the staff. Did that change, on Monday, there was A, as unfinished business, there was an acceptance or an adoption of that amendment to the sewer ordinance, and as a follow-up agenda item, there was actually the findings of facts consistent with that new language that was passed by the council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think part of this, too, the other piece of information that I got was that if they were gonna do this, like dual connection to things, and that 10-foot wide easement would have to be 30 feet wide.
Right, I read that in there.
And they went down that road with the 30 feet, and it was just going nowhere.
Correct.
And it just seemed kinda crazy, because the system was already built to be, you know, connected to it. So this is a very special case, but I think it just exposed an opportunity in the sewer ordinance for them to, I mean, we don't have anything in our ordinances that talks about that, it just says the sewer has to be accepted by the sewer department. There's just a reference in our ordinances to that. So even that ordinance change and all that stuff that happened...
But it's still interesting if someone is curious to know how it unfolded, because we did have, the fact that the ordinance did not allow was a huge stumbling block. So it was kind of an impetus, not necessarily for this project, but to allow us to have flexibility and exert common sense when it's needed, and it benefited, in this case, this application, absolutely.
Okay.
There were, it was pointed out earlier by Mr. DeLeo, that there were some conditions?
On the last page, number four.
And one of them is that, that the expansion is limited beyond this now, and a note to this effect should be placed on the planning board's site plan. Were you guys aware of that? Did you see that?
Could you repeat that again?
The memo that I had, the very last section of it, there's a list of conditions to protect public health, the very last one, C, limitation on future expansion. A special exception is granted for the sole purpose of the eight rental units proposed, and not for any other uses or additional expansion. A note to this effect should be placed on the planning board's site plan.
Right. That note can be added.
Okay. Yeah, we would make that a condition. Would that be added to the site? Are there other questions from the planning board members about the site plan?
Yes, I have a question, actually, as to do a stormwater.
Sure.
Kind of, right in the middle is kind of an oval shape. It looks like to be an indentation with a catch basin and three or four parallel storm drains. Is that something, is that all underground?
Yes.
Is that an indentation?
Yes, that's, it's a vegetated, excuse me, vegetated underdrain soil filter that meets DEP specifications. It's a specific stormwater treatment system with a soil filter media. It's not intended to actually hold water, it's intended to gather water and let it infiltrate down through the soil filter and get collected in the underdrains and then connect to the outlet, which is over to the...
Way over to the right?
Right, exactly, to, yeah, to the north of the project.
And so the water in that area, the elevations are such that the water would drain from both the current property and the proposed property into that swell hole, so to speak? Some of it?
Yeah, the drain, it's intended specifically to collect the runoff from the new impervious areas, the new parking. The roofs are actually collected in drip line filtration, which are another specific DEP treatment measures for the building roof specifically. So that centerpiece is mostly for the new pavement.
Okay, and then it'll flow underground over to that, like a riprap type area?
Yeah, correct, to the riprap apron, just to prevent any erosion from the outlet.
Now, is there any, as the water flows and gets to that, that structure, then does it go off the property to the neighboring property?
It does. We've run hydrologic models, hydrocod models for this particular site, and the runoff rate leading the property is the same or less than pre-development conditions, and I think a copy, that's described in the stormwater report that was submitted. So what happens is the runoff collects in this soil filter, and it actually has a slight slowing effect or detaining effect. So even though we're increasing impervious area, we're still holding this runoff onto the site long enough to slow it down, so it doesn't create any adverse effects off property.
Does city staff agree with that? And one other question I had is, there's a copy of Darbro's Declaration of Covenants for the original planned unit development. Does this document then apply to the new development, too? Or is this just, it's like a homeowner's?
Yeah, originally, this entire thing was done in a phase one, phase two.
Right.
And we're a phase two.
So does this document now apply to the people renting these new?
Yeah, and there's a reference, there's a reference on our plan referring to this.
There is some part, the association itself, correct me if I remember, doesn't apply, but there's some part of, under the utilities, I think it's towards the last page, that applied to both properties.
Could you clarify that, please? So in the original development, there was these two phases, and so all the owners of that original phase one were subject to this association, right, that you're referring to?
Right, and then there's easement that's written in that covers the lines that we're using now, that were included in this deed, as well as all these conditions, easements, descriptive situations, and there is one bar in here that shows phase one, phase two.
So those rules and those covenants apply to this, to this project here that we're looking at, even though there's a different owner?
Yes, 'cause it was originally all referenced as part of everything.
Okay.
There's a lot of generality, generality in here, but...
So all of the covenants, I'm not, can't do this, and have to do this?
That's not the way I see it. This is not my project, the owner is here, but I thought that the homeowners associations were similar to condo association, was just not a condo association, and some of those restriction covenants, we call CCRs, were for the main part attributable to the condo project. That's what, I was under the impression, but...
Is that sort of what your question is, or?
Yeah, I'm confused now, probably even more than when I started. Mr. White, can you answer that? I mean, will this, this homeowners association apply to your tenants?
I did not intend on doing that, the reason is, I think, is what they're trying to explain is, this is not a condo. So there's condo restrictions for these individual owners, I'm the sole owner of the whole property, we're just rentals. So they are a different...
Oh, rentals, okay.
Yeah.
Different ownership.
You know, yearly leases, has nothing to do with the actual condo association.
Okay, so that's interesting.
Well, that's what, I mean, one thing I was wondering, were there, the current homeowners versus tenants, you know, rental tenants is like, okay, how can you apply this homeowners association to rental tenants?
Where did you get that from? From the stuff that was attached? This package?
Yes, yep.
Complete copy, this covenants, conditions, restrictions, and easements. Declaration of covenants, conditions. So how, how do we resolve that?
Question, Mike, are you part of the homeowners association, then?
No, I'm not.
Okay, you have a right to weigh into everything, deeded or recorded, right of ways, and how about maintenance agreements, items like that?
Currently, uh...
Mike, go to the mic.
Currently, the way that it's written, and our intentions, is to maintain the driveway in, as well as the utilities underneath the driveway, unfortunately, are our responsibility. So in other words, we don't wanna affect anything that's there previous to the, to the previous Butters. But as far as the actual covenants, those covenants are, if you read them, they're obviously condo covenants, they really don't apply to what we're doing. And I know that was the original intentions when Darbro Incorporated did those, there was condos here in phase two, was supposed to be condos back in 1970, whatever, was supposed to be condos as well, and was his original intentions to do that.
You mentioned that there were right of ways and easements listed here?
Right, on page 138 of that package, there is a, it's a bit of a generalized, but it's easement that gives the information that these easements are all part of phase one, phase two, and these are the things that are on our plan here now, and the references on our plan, that this particular description is our easement. Page 138 to the...
In the original package, not this?
No, the one I gave, this time I gave you a thick package of that tie deed.
This one?
The one I just, yeah, I think it's dated, 27 to 17?
Mine doesn't have page numbers.
It doesn't talk, as the time of booking age.
Registered.
Oh, the deed, okay, sorry. 138.
Mr. Chairman?
Owners easements of joint, yes, ma'am.
So what we call CCR, covenant and conditional restriction, we don't, those are private regulation enforced amongst people that have those same restriction on their properties. We, the city, both from code enforcement, both from the planning board, do not get involved in that. So may there be a restriction there, or could someone say, well, you would have to impose the same restriction, you can't have kit stores or whatever, on this apartment rental? One could argue this, but regardless of that, that we don't get into this. Why they gave us the deed, and why it's important to us, is to make sure that we know what infrastructure, what utilities, and what right of ways are there, and to make sure that they had the ability to tie into this as if we're getting involved in it. So from our position, is also in this case, is to make sure that we knew who was gonna maintain this road, and that there's a note on the plan, and the applicant's fully aware of their responsibility. So our interest is health, safety, and welfare of the whole, and really is based, now that I don't wanna cut the discussion short, but I just wanna remind the planning board how we look at that thick package, and what's our interest and what we had an interest
Yeah, I only brought up the right of way easement in, just to make sure they had legal access to the new phase.
And that was part of our comments in the past, we wanted to make sure that they would demonstrate to us that they did have the right to hook into this.
And is that recorded?
What is that?
The right of way in and everything, that they have the legal right?
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, condo restrictions are for the condo.
Right, but I guess what I'm hearing is that they actually took part of this and said, this is our right for easements. They gave us the whole thing, and basically, there's a note on the plan that says this as well?
Yeah, I got a...
The second note writes of utilities access to Declaration of covenants?
The rights of utilities access to Declaration of covenants, and that page 69 through 131, and I gave you the entire thing, but I'm 38.
All right, now I understand.
We requested the entire document as part of what Matt gave us, talked about phase one, phase two, and then, like automatically, if you're curious, you're gonna learn what that is all about. So that's why we have the entire document, and they should provide us the entire document. And that's how it went down.
Does that answer your questions, John?
On that part of it, but I mean, brings up more questions. Specifically on the, on the roads in the development, which are made private roads, understandably, I mean, there's, there's roads with Beckwith Woods Community Association. As you come into the driveway, which the developer has a right to, then you get to the new development roads. Are they going to be, are they going to be separate? Snow plow companies doing that? I just foresee.
Thank you for asking that. We actually had a neighborhood meeting with the folks, and that's something we talked about. Basically, yes, we kind of assumed that whoever's the first plow truck in there coming into the main driveway would obviously just plow the main driveway in. And then as the new development goes off to the right, we could plow that. I actually spoke to them about giving them a plow bit, hopefully better than what they're getting now, and help them with taking care of all the plowing, you know, for the whole, for the whole area, so you don't have, you know, separation in that. It easily could be separated, you wouldn't have to do that, but I think if I'm going to be there plowing, we have, we have three plow trucks, so we, we could easily assist them with their plowing they have now and maybe even save them some money.
I mean, I, I, because I know in the past, you know, you get houses next to each other with driveways that may be next to each other, and there's always, well, he pushed no over on my side of the road, and no, it's not my side of the road, it's yours. Gets to be a real.
No, I understand that.
I mean, neighborhood dispute basically.
Yeah, and again, obviously more of a private issue as well, but, you know, anybody that knows me, I've lived here my whole life, and I certainly don't need any enemies. And so we, we are certainly going to work our best to make sure everybody's happy.
And obviously, I mean, there's things like that, we can't legislate, so to speak, but, I mean, it's certainly, we want to make sure that the current homeowners are, you know, kept whole.
And so do we.
Thank you.
I had a question about the, that depressed area that he was talking about. Can you plow snow into that? Is there a, can you not do that? Is that not allowed?
It's not recommended just because of the getting gravel and things into the soil filter, but I mean, there's, it's, it's just not recommended, it's not prohibited by any stretch.
Is that area on the adjacent property up front, is that all paved right now?
I'm sorry, the, the site that's to be developed is all wooded at the moment.
At the adjacent property that exists right now, there's a property line between the two projects?
Right, this lower section is all on the new development section. There's a property line, there's a dash line in the back of the Beckwith Court area. That's our property line on this section. So all of this is in our property.
Is it, is it paved across that all the way? I mean, it looks like there's a.
It will be around a drive that goes, circles that, but that area.
I mean, existing.
There is an existing portion of the existing parking lot that's on the applicant's property.
It's on it, yeah. But the intention area will all.
And do they, do they typically plow up against the woods there, or they avoid that property line and use snow storage someplace else?
Right now, they're sort of plowing right up against it.
Okay. So I had some stormwater questions about, there appears to be a line that is on the left-hand side of the plan, and there's a small area that you're collecting water from and putting it into a 12-inch pipe. And it looks like that pipe goes all the way from the left side of the property, all the way over to the right, and exits that same drainage structure that John was referencing earlier?
That outfall.
I had a series of questions about that.
Sure.
First of all, those two pipes, when they come to that outfall area, those are two 12-inch pipes, and in the drawing, they just sort of come together. Are those pipes just going to be laid parallel to each other?
There, it'll be two 12-inch culverts, basically, outfalling right there. I know this is, this isn't a construction drawing, obviously, but it's just showing the intent, is that the way the outfall's going to be?
Okay, and so then the next question is, is that, that, I was having trouble reading the stormwater report, finding out sort of what the length and slope of that pipe was?
Sure. The slope of, well, this, the long pipe right there, well, first of all, the intent of that pipe is we have runoff coming from this section of adjacent property. We're just basically collecting it and continuing it underneath the development so that it doesn't go into our treatment structure, so that the only water volume going into the treatment structure is just what needs to be treated, kind of preserving the integrity of the system. So we're just routing it through and continuing it on. The invert in is at elevation 232, and the invert out is at 225. So you have a height difference of like seven feet across the slope, and this is a subgrade, so it's underneath, but, so it's got a pitch on it that will allow for water to travel through it. If that's the question that you have on it?
That's part of the question.
Okay.
So how long is that?
About 400 feet.
Thank you. It's about 400 feet, Matt just scaled it off.
Okay, and then in looking at it, I mean, it's part of the, it's part of the stormwater maintenance plan, and so my, and it looks like right around where that depressed area is, there's a bend in it? In, in practical terms, if you go out there and dig a trench for this pipe, I mean, is it, is it pipe that's corrugated and it's flexible? Is there going to be a joint right there? How is that typically implemented in the real world?
Well, in, in the real world, you'd have sections of pipe that would be connected together with soil type fittings. That bend right there, whether it's really going to end up being constructed with a bend in it, or if it's going to be straightened out in some way through the course of construction kind of remains to be seen, but the intent is that there'll be a relatively straight stretch of pipe kind of running through here, so that this undeveloped runoff can just carry through.
Okay, so I have some follow-up questions based on that then. First of all, because the pipe is coming all the way across by the vegetated filter and appears to pass underneath a water valve, what is the, in three dimensions, sort of, is that pipe much deeper than that? How, how deep is the pipe going to be? Does it affect those structures that it's passing close by to?
Those are really good questions, and typically those would be ironed out through construction details where you figure out where the conflicts were between the utilities. But utility crossings are not uncommon. But it would need to be evaluated to make sure that there was enough depth of the storm drain can either be above it or below it, that water valve. So some tweaks might be necessary just to make sure everything is, you know, able to fit on the site properly.
Okay.
But that's definitely, just for constructability, we would need to figure that out.
So that's sort of a problem that you solve as you're building it?
Exactly, but the intent is shown on the plans, and it's not, what we're showing here is something that we feel confident is able to be worked out through construction in a way that would be reflected as shown here.
Okay, so the last two questions that I have then about that length of pipe then is, it seems like your strategy is to just take stuff from one side of the property and just take it all the way over to the other side. And I guess in theory, you haven't really changed anything, other than the fact that when that stuff was over on the other side, what used to happen before is that would just travel according to the pre-existing conditions. It would just travel and disperse along and get added to whatever was there. You're picking it up and transporting it in a very channelized kind of way, delivering it at the end, with, with what I'm guessing, because of the slope and the containment of the pipe, is some increased velocity. I was trying to read the stormwater report and figure out just exactly what that velocity is, and reconcile the fact that you're putting it close to the edge of the property line, it looks like, I don't know, 20 feet into a drainage structure, at, what I was thinking was some increased velocity. What, what is the impact of that? Why did you choose to do that? Is that drainage structure prepared to hold that? And do you feel like that that structure is far enough away from the property line that it's going to have a chance to spread out a little bit more?
Yeah, no, I appreciate all those questions. The reason that we're doing that is, is because of the treatment system. We, it's a small site, the treatment that we have sized is big enough to treat the runoff from the impervious areas, it doesn't have extra capacity to take this runoff from the adjacent property. So we're collecting this clean runoff from this adjacent property, nothing's being added to it, continuing through. There will be a slight increase in velocity because of, like you said, it's going through a pipe. But when it gets to the outfall, and I just want to clarify, there's no structure at the end, it's just two culvert endings into a riprap apron. I believe there's a detail on, let me find it. A detail on sheet C3 for the riprap aprons. So that, that riprap apron is actually intended to be that dispersion. And its size, the dimensions of the apron are specific, the size of the stones are specific to the size of the culvert that is emptying to them. It's done that way so that it accounts for the velocity coming out of the pipe based on the size of the pipe and how much water that pipe can handle.
And the, and the fact that you deliver two pipes to that same apron?
Two pipes to the same apron would just end up, the amount of runoff going through it is the length of the, of the riprap apron that creates that dispersion. So you just make it a little bit wider for the two pipes, that length would still be the same for the two 12-inch diameter pipes, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, it does. And then I guess the last question I had about that, as a practical matter, because I don't have any experience with it, how do you, how do you maintain 400 feet of pipe and not let it get plugged up? How do you know when it's backed up and needs cleaning? Is there some sort of structure on the inlet of it that doesn't let small animals and children, I mean, like, I don't want to, I'm not going to say people, but like just junk, crap, leaves, rocks? What do, what do people typically do to maintain structures like that when it's that long?
Yeah, it's a good question, and there are some challenges with a long stretch of pipe, but it's not the collection point, you can put like a grate of some sort if that's, if that's intent, sort of a debris catcher, if that's a problem. It is only a 12-inch culvert, and I don't believe that the property running to it has much volume going into it, although I'd have to double check that with our, with our model.
And that's kind of where I was getting stuck. I was trying to read the stormwater and identify in the documentation where that pipe was shown, what the volumes were compared to the other volumes. Just got kind of lost in there, but.
I'm, I'm not surprised, I know that the stormwater management report is dealing more with the development itself, not necessarily adjacent properties, handling water from adjacent properties, so to speak. We're more focusing on addressing the amount of runoff that would be increased due to the impervious area. But I can take a look again at our hydrologic model just to see how much water is going through that pipe, because I know we didn't pick the 12-inch size out of a hat, we did make sure that it was something that would be sized appropriately, so.
So the, the adjacent properties, where this comes from at the beginning, and then the adjacent property that this eventually flows down to, what, what is there on, on both of those ends? Is there a development or there?
The lot where it starts is still vacant.
Okay. Wooded, sort of like this one is now?
Yeah, and.
Yeah, well, it's, it's pretty much open, open area. When you drive up through, you look at it, and it's all clear.
Oh, so like a field, like an open field, okay.
And, and the area that this, this pipe is collecting really isn't all that much as far as water flowing, so there probably won't be much risk of water backing in, you know, backing up or the pipe clog, clogging or, or some adverse effects of that nature.
Plus the contours don't really show any.
Yeah, it's just a small, it's more of a, almost a precautionary thing to keep water from entering into the stormwater treatment system and diminishing the effects of the system itself. And as far as the outfall, you were asking about the.
Yeah, what is, I, I don't think I've been out there before to look at what the adjacent area looks like. I'm assuming it's undeveloped, or are there structures, or?
Well, it's wooded right along the property line, where we see the contours that'll take the water down through, but as you continue on, it's obviously open and developed buildings. But right against the property line, it's still a wooded section.
Okay.
And, and the amount of runoff that's leaving the site is actually less than the pre-development conditions, just based on that slowing effect we talked about with the, with the soil filter.
Okay, yeah, I saw the numbers were then, it was actually lower.
Yeah.
Which is what the ordinance requires. Okay, thank you for answering all those questions.
No problem.
Oh, so two, two more questions I had. First of all, there's a concrete pad, and it looks like there's going to be a dumpster. And the ordinance requires screening, I was not able to find any notes or drawing notes or text in the application that mentions that that would be screened. So there's an ordinance, section eight, I think, or something, that has a requirement for that. Part of the performance standards, it's.
So you'd like to see a note regarding that on the plan?
Yeah, there seems to be some requirement in the ordinance about screening.
Correct. There is.
Okay, so we would be interested in that, I believe. And then the last thing was, oh, screening of, it's 813 dot 18, screening of trash receptacles, which is, that's what I'm assuming that pad is for, is trash. The last question I have is about the fire hydrant that's depicted on the plan. Is that, I'm guessing that it's not functional and it's going to be removed, is that correct?
Well, it's not functional. We were asked to put a note on that, but whether it's going to be removed, how do we stand with it for that?
The previous, and just so that you get the full gist of my questions, the previous plans had ballards around it. And so is it going to stay there? How do we protect it?
The, of course, the existing hydrant that's within the development right now is non-operational.
And that's the one that's depicted on the plan?
Correct.
Sort of where the road bends around and comes into this new development?
That is correct.
Okay.
We have asked the new developer to move the hydrant that's on High Street closer to the entrance to the Beckwith Woods and Beckwith Pine division, subdivision, so that we have a proper type of water supply, so we don't have to drive by the entrance to use to grab the hydrant and go back in. That would suffice for protection for both the existing and the, the new development. The existing hydrant that's there has been off for some time now, and I really don't have any means to make them remove it. However, the code does require that if it exists, it's supposed to be maintained in operable fashion. So the idea is that if it's not going to be maintained, then it does need to be removed.
But that hydrant is not the property of the applicant, correct?
That's correct.
So it's not, so I just want to make sure that the hydrant we're talking about is not even part of this project.
The water supply for this project comes off of?
High Street.
Another piece of?
It's the water supply for the, for the project you're looking at is coming off of the hydrant that's being moved to the entrance, if you notice, on High Street. It's being moved closer to the, it's within the city's right of way.
It's being slipped, south, north.
It's being moved north towards the entrance.
Right, and then that becomes the water, there's going to be a line from that to this development?
No.
No.
No, that's it.
No, sir. That just allows that hydrant to be closer for use.
It's fire suppression. It's fire suppression.
For fire suppression.
Okay.
It does nothing with the interior hydrant at this time.
Okay, so back to the phase one, phase two part of it, just so I get the clear picture of, of the water thing. It's, the water supply for this project is intended to be teed off of the existing water line that goes through Beckwith Woods community, and you guys are gonna attach to that?
Yes, it's, it's already there. You can see the line. It's also the one that supplies that inoperable hydrant.
Okay.
Those lines parallel to the condos, and then it goes ninety into our area. That's existing line.
So that existing fire hydrant is inop- just because the valves closed? Or there, there was no infrastructure provided?
It's a long story there.
It's a long story. Um, it was shut down in the early um, uh, mid eighties, early nineties, um, for lack of payment.
Okay, so my main concern about that hydrant and why I'm asking questions about it is because the road comes straight down and then has to duck around that hydrant before it goes through this project. So if I'm a plow guy and I'm coming down there and it's some sort of inactive fire hydrant, is it, is it marked? Is there a metal flag on that that sticks up above the snow?
It is not. It's a private hydrant and it's not maintained by the city of Ellsworth.
And it's not protected by any ballards or any, so I could just take that?
That is correct.
Out with my blade if I?
That is correct.
They'd probably thank you.
That is accurate.
And it's not on your property?
No.
Not even in the scope of this project.
You get the short version of the story.
Okay, um, and they currently plow around that on the adjacent property somehow. Who cares? Okay, sorry. Um, well, thank you for that. Now I understand how it's not on this property. Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
There's that one for Mr. Hanging. Those on the, the two buildings on the right, appears to be, there's, there's six feet between the two buildings, and the other two, looks like twelve, fifteen feet?
The new, the new project?
Yes.
That is within the, that is within the building code, um, as far as clearances between buildings. Um, I believe the, I believe the IBC allows between three to five feet clearance between buildings.
Okay, so now I wanna ask the city if they have any things that they would like to bring up about this application in the area of completeness or any other comments about this before we open the public hearing? Is there anything you'd like to offer to us, we should be considering? Okay, hearing, nothing. This is a public meeting. I'd like to open this um, up right now to the public. If anybody would like to come forward to make a comment or a statement about this project, I only ask that you step up to the podium and state your name. Does anybody would like to comment?
My name's Christopher Stanley. I'm the current president of the Beckwith Woods Community Association. We are, we're here tonight because we have some concerns about some of the agreements that are not yet in place with the two parties. We have had a eyeball meeting that the city facilitated for us, which was very nice, and we ironed out a lot of nitpicky details, but we, as of right now, don't have um, any concrete information on paper to know what the intent of the ideas that we had come up at the meeting and came out with. We did discuss water line connections, sewer line connections, uh, road maintenance and such, and we still have a lot of open concerns with that.
Okay. Your right.
And if you have any questions for me as far as the association goes, I can answer.
Yeah, I guess the, the gist of the question would be, um, because of the way that the project changed and the ownership is different now, um. Do you think that there is parts of this application that you've seen that are incomplete or missing?
Well, the original application that we saw and we talked about, um, there was the talk that the water supply for this new uh, development would come down, uh, through, in through the driveway entrance, and it would be a completely new system rather than tapping onto the existing system. Uh, we presented at the meeting that if they had connect onto our system, it then becomes a two-user system and the city would most likely take it over and assume responsibility for it, because there'd be two separate owners on the line. And it was also benefit us in the, uh, in that we would have more flow in our pipe. And right now, we have, the pipe was designed for phase two later on, and right now, there's just ten units on it, and I think it's originally designed for whatever, it was twenty-five units or something. It's a six inch main through there, so, um, right now, we're experiencing a lot of dirty water. And uh, when we had the eyeball meeting, they agreed that that would be something they would look into, but as, since that meeting, we haven't heard anything um, beyond that.
And this is, this is water. You're not talking about wastewater. You're talking about water supply, drinking water.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the sto- uh, this, the wastewater hookup was gonna be the same as discussed at the meeting, and I think they're gonna tap on the existing line that was there.
That was my understanding, yeah.
Yeah.
That's kinda what all the city council activity was about.
Yeah.
Was to utilize that. Okay.
And if perhaps you can clarify the, what happened was as far as the, the ordinance with the sewer line and how that's gonna affect us if they decide to hook onto it? I mean, I, I was a little foggy when you guys were talking about it.
Okay, yeah, we can, I'll try and reiterate, simplify it. Any, anything else that you think? Now, understand, like I said before, we're, we're talking about completeness.
Yeah.
We get through that part, we're also gonna go into another part where we can, there'll be another opportunity if you wanna talk about.
As, as far as the association goes, I think what's missing for us is we don't have any agreements in place.
Okay.
Nothing's been presented to us yet.
All right.
Um, in any concrete fashion, so.
Okay.
For us, that's a concern.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does this become a public water line where it's being shared by two?
So, I, I guess that the, the, someone was making comment is correct when there's two people on the line, it becomes a public water line. I think that just pressure-wise or volume-wise, we're fully aware, the city's fully aware that even though, um, it meets PUC at this time, that, um, there is issues at that lo- at that location. So on the plan, there has been a note that's added that, uh, I believe a pump? Pressure pump or something?
Yeah, there was some.
A booster pump, thank you, Matt, will be installed, um, um, to, to make sure that there's not further degradation of what they, they feel that they're getting right now. And I remember the discussion regarding tying in or looping in in a different way. Um, and I cannot, I mean, I'm sure the applicant, so, yeah. Elena, Elena?
Wait, hold up. Can we stop for just a second? I know that we wanna dig into this a little bit further, but this is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry about that.
So we're kinda in the public hearing part. I just wanna ask, before I close the public hearing, if anybody else has comments about the completeness of this application? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to try to help with your concerns if that's, if this is a time for that.
Concerns about, um, let's give members of the public, I know that you're the owner, so we wanna give you a chance to speak, but is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and now we wanna let the, um, the applicant and the owners make comments about what we heard. You, you were starting about the water connection?
Yes, I was just gonna say that, um, after the meeting with the, uh, abutters that the town facilitated, uh, after that discussion about the water system, um, we were originally tying into the water line up on, on, on High Street, but we moved it based on discussions at that meeting down to the end of the, that stubbed water line that's existing there. And that was one of the main reasons it was moved, just based on, um, you know, talking with the neighbors. So if that's.
These, these, these booster pumps that you were talking about, those would be placed in between the two projects or out on the street?
No, that, the booster pump is gonna be located within the, the new development itself, and it's just intended to, uh, provide, uh, pressure for the new development, but there will be no effect on the existing pressure conditions that are on, on the existing condos on the water main, if that's the concern.
And that's, no, number nineteen on the plan refers to that.
Okay.
And the maintenance is the owner.
You, you had some comments that you wanted to make as the?
Thank you. Just wanted to say, uh, one of the things we brought up at the TIT meeting is what this gentleman just mentioned is, um, this water line that's there is of large capacity and was designed for much bigger capacity that's been using now. Um, one of the things that gentleman brought up from the water company is that having more use of that line is gonna prevent a lot of the, uh, silt that they're getting, uh, in there, because it's, it's designed for, to move much more water. Um, so part, a lot of what we're doing is, is a, is a big benefit, um, to the original Beckwith Woods. And the other thing also, when they, when they talk about the sewer line, um, there will be an agreement where right now, they're solely responsible for, for the sewer line, and we, uh, are gonna work on an agreement with them directly, um, to assume fifty percent of that. Uh, so again, a lot of benefits, um, towards them, and as they just mentioned too, per their request. Uh, because they're worried about pressure, they wanted us to move to the backside of the water line, which is no yea or nay to us, so we, we did it regardless, but, uh, the individual purchase, uh, won't be affected at all.
How, how, how do you feel about, um, sort of the ongoing discussions that you're having with the abutters as far as putting together some agreements, some things in writing? What, just in general, how do you?
In the meetings we had, it went very well, um, and I, and I think it's just a, a matter of verbiage, making people comfortable and, and recognizing that there, there is benefit, uh, for them, um, in what we're doing, and which is our intentions from the beginning, is to just make it, uh, better for both, both sides.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so pursuing that line of questioning with the city, is this true? That two owners on the same water line changes the status of the water line?
I'm not positive. I think it's an individual case. I do remem- I do believe that PUC requires if you have two separate owners on the same water line, that they have to, it has to be public to maintain for the city, but if that's the case, we're gonna have to have an easement shown on that plan. It would allow all the blocks to maintain that. Is there any easement on that, Matt?
Not to the water company, no. I'm just looking at his letter this time. Reggie has written a, he was a letter.
Matt, you did, you did not provide a blanket easement that was gonna cover all utilities?
We, we got an easement around the valves and things for the water company.
Yep.
And, and access to get in through everything.
So we could provide, we could add a, a general utility maintenance and repair easement like we've done.
Right, right. And what Mike said in reference to the water quality. Be correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong, but because that hydrant isn't active, it's not possible to blow that line out in the summer. You have a six inch line disappointing what probably could be used for a two inch line. So you've got stagnation in that large six inch pipe. So in all, in that rationale, if you have more fall going through there, it could actually help bust that line out.
Okay. Good.
So we, we would ask for a blanket, kind of a, an overall project easement allowing for maintenance and repair of the public, of utilities? That can give Matt the language that we use.
I thought we had covered that with Reggie.
Yeah, I feel like we had something like that.
I thought we did too.
Quite sure, so I'll hear.
Me too, I think it's on there because, uh, that's why I asked.
I mean, is there gonna be something that, I finally found the, the letter from the water department. Considering that there's the issue of two owners on this line and now it may be the city's responsibility, is there gonna be something that addresses that, that puts it in writing? That this is a responsibility, the, the, the city?
I think it's put the easements on the, on the plan. I know if you look, one of the issues on the booster pumps, just take the booster pumps, Reggie. Um, those booster pumps have to be approved by the city water department before they're actually used. That in and of itself shows the city is, you know, and then everything has to be accessible. Valves, meters, et cetera, et cetera, have to be, so that they can get to those. So I know that Reggie has been looking at that as far as being a public water line, because there are now two users on, on that line. Remember that conversation?
Well, I'd like to see, I mean, I, I think there needs to be something protecting Mr. White and the, the current condo owners. This doesn't get built, and the booster gets, pumps get put in, and then Reggie all of a sudden says, well, no, I'm not gonna accept it.
Well, we're, we're responsible for the maintenance.
Well, I mean, the, the acceptance of the, you know, who actually maintains the line, the water line? You know, now that two properties are on this water line, which from what I understand now becomes a public line, which the city has to maintain, but, but. Who, is somebody gonna come out in, in writing and say that? Is it?
Yeah, the thing that Reggie mentioned was mainly the concern of the valve locations, and we got a note on there covering that. And, and also, there's a note that, uh, a new easement shall be granted to the Ellsworth Water Department to allow access to line and valve coordinate with the city water department, with the Ellsworth Water Department.
Cause I emailed that too there. So your question, though, is, is still not answered?
No.
Is it note sixteen? That be addressing it?
You're seeing this note on the plan, right? Can you, we'll point it back to you. He's saying right here, a new easement shall be granted to the Ellsworth Water Department to allow access to the line and the valve coordinate. So he's talking about this. And I'm, I'm assuming we can generalize to this whole thing if this becomes public, right?
Well, I, I would assume it won't be public until they split. I wanna say they can sing the line, then we.
That, that covered us. That makes us responsible for the water line.
Right.
Okay, so that's maintenance. We're, we're trying to separate easement, right? That's what you're concerned about is easement? Access or ownership?
Yeah, I guess, ownership. I mean, is some of this water line gonna be turned over to the city?
Excuse me?
No, we're just not trying to figure out, you know, some of this water line then become property of the city to maintain.
Yeah, so what happens when the city takes ownership of a piece of?
Pardon me, sir?
I'm looking behind you, actually.
Oh.
Uh, David Cole, city manager. This is the responsibility of the city. The city's going to take care of it. If not, it's a private matter between the two parties. And, but it's not, it's not optional. If it's required of the PUC that we take it over, we'll need to take it over. Uh, I would defer to Michelle and her staff to figure out how to memorialize that.
Okay. Thank you.
John, can you summarize exactly your point one more time? So we just capture?
I just wanna make sure everybody, the city, Mr. White, and the current condo owners know the rules. You know, who's gonna maintain the water lines?
And what sections?
Okay.
The, uh.
I know at previous meetings, we had the water come, the water disorder were here, the people were here.
Yeah.
And they could have their input. I, I think everything seems to be tying together. I think we should put on, as a preliminary right now.
Okay.
And let, come back again one more time, and hopefully everything, it seems like it's working in the right direction. And have everybody involved and, you know, the two, uh, owners are the condo association and the new owner. I think they're talking. I think they're talking about it very, you know, very good. And come back and see what they have. And everything seems to be okay.
Okay, so what you're proposing is-
Is just to vote on primary.
Here's, we make a sort of determination tonight on sort of completeness.
Correct.
And then put some conditions that we expect to see a final plan and, and make that a separate meeting.
Yeah.
So the directive would be that you're looking for, um-
The water department here.
For, for the water department here, or you're looking more for a maintenance plan, a clear maintenance plan, so roles and responsibilities?
I think what we need is that, like Mr. Cole said, we need a clear determination that, you know, the city owns it. And everything else follows from that, right? If you had a clear indication, this is what, this is how it is. All the rest of the BAU rules, we don't need to reinvent them about maintenance. If the city owns it, the city owns it and they do what they have to do. But also, it, it, they're complicated. This booster pump thing seems to be some sort of a conditional, submitted and approved by the Ellsworth Water Department. Those things would have to be presented in a complete package for final.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be approving something that wasn't like well documented. Does that address your concern?
Yes.
Okay, so other things about completeness. We need to sort of move forward here to the best of our ability. What other items do we have for completeness to consider?
You had the screen dumpster.
And add the future expansion. There's no future expansion.
Okay, right, yep.
And the screening of the trash receptacle.
Okay, so we have these three things. Easement utilities, those are recorded. Is there any kind of requirement for some agreements between the abutting property owners and what the gentleman was, was talking about, the fact that he didn't feel like there was-
The road connections or the sewer water?
The, outside the sewer water. The road connections. We, we have this note about the easement.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I think that is, is okay. I mean, they've got a plan in place for maintaining the roads. They're just trying to agree on who's plowing what, basically, and trying to get it to one.
Alright, so that's, that, that's like an agreement between the parties then, right? That's not really part of what the planning board puts its teeth into? Okay.
As long as it's in writing, yeah, we're all happy with it.
Alright, so it, it seems like we, we have these three conditions that we're going to ask you for. One of them is that we somehow memorialize the ownership of the water system. And if it becomes the city, we have to explicitly say that. There's this dumpster screening issue that we'd like to see addressed, although, you know, that could have been taken care of in final, but add it now. And then the explicit note that says that there's a limit on the future expansion of the sewer system. We can't just keep daisy chaining onto that based on the-
They're granted sewer exception.
They're granted sewer exception, yes. Uh, so if there were to be a motion for completeness, it would have to include those conditions. What would the, what would the board like to do with this application?
Well, I vote on that we should propose. We should vote on as this is complete. We have all the information we need. And we should just vote on the completeness. For approved major subdivision plan and reapproval of non-existent laps, major use development plan titled Beckwith Plan. And I propose we, uh, it's on a two point three area parcel off Route Three, High Street. Via Beckwith Court. Tax lot, uh, tax map, map lot sixteen forty seven three. And it's in the commercial zone.
Okay.
I believe we should vote on the, that is on the completeness currently for this evening.
Okay, so that, that's your motion then?
Right.
Is there a second?
One second.
Is there a discussion? And I would like to, if, if I may, we, we should maybe add these three conditions that we've discussed.
Yep.
To be part of them.
Would you mind reading them, seeing you have them?
Yeah, so these would be, um, these- Well, we're going to say that it's complete, but we want to add these conditions.
Exceptions.
Address for the final meeting.
To be addressed in the final meeting. So we'll make a determination of, of completeness and these items can be added as requirements for final. Be alright? And so those are memorializing the ownership of the water system, screening the dumpster and putting a limit on future expansion of this sewer system.
I guess we'd like to also say that they have a continuation meeting amongst the owners condo association and the owner, the new owner.
That, that we want to be careful about.
Okay, okay, but we're going to have those specific questions.
I think we'd be very encouraged to hear about that at the next meeting to see what sort of progress, but I don't think we can make that as stipulation. So that is the motion for completeness with those expectations for final. All those in favor? Thank you. So that's a determination of completeness. We would have to see you again for final at a separate meeting. Is that your understanding, Michelle?
That was, you were able to make the decision, yes.
Look, with these three conditions that we just discussed.
Those, yeah, those are the expectations for the final, that those would be in place.
Alright. And there, there are no other items, nothing else to be added. These three conditions added to everything we've done. And we'll be good to go next time.
We believe that that would be true, yes. And we are going to have another, as part of that meeting, there'll be another chance for the public. We're going to be interested to, you know, hear what they have to say, so we're expecting that. I think that's all we can do for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda tonight is an after the fact amendment to amended subdivision on us Guptal Farm subdivision, plant file twenty nine dash one eighteen for Jordan Gurr Incorporated and Doug Kerr. Modifications resulting in the relocation of boundary lines around Lot Twenty. Tax map four stroke seventy two. And partial relocation of a hundred foot wide utility easement owned by AmeriMaine in the neighborhood zone.
Sure, absolutely.
There's someone here representing the-
Steve Zalsbury?
Welcome. What do you have for us?
We recently relocated a Anglo Hydro utility easement on this subdivision. And made an adjustment to Lot Twenty. And some smarter minds than me came to decide that we needed to come back to the planning board to amend the subdivision because of the change to the configuration. So that's what brings us here tonight.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Steve, what's changed from the, right away, the utility easement there? What, I don't know the original plan.
I gave you the last amended plan in your application.
Yeah, that's the, kind of marked in orange.
That's the amended one?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Yes, we, we did some orange highlighting so they could follow.
Oh, that one?
Yes. That's what she just emailed us.
You want to see it closer?
Yeah, those are the, I made a couple changes between the one I gave you early on that one. I added a table showing the dimensions of the easement.
Why don't you get this to him?
Yeah, I see that.
Uh, I gave everybody a copy of this, this, the nineteen ninety nine.
Yep.
Was that in your application?
Yep.
Showing what Lot Twenty used to look like?
Yep.
So you can compare that to what we propose now.
It was, yeah, this one.
So if I may, Steve, you got something in your package, but there was a full size map. Steve did some minor revision that we emailed you and then we provided a small version because it's just was not worth for us to do a big copies of that. I'm sorry.
My question is, what was the motivation for the moving of the AmeriMaine easement? Was that something you guys initiated based on the layout?
Yes. Uh, there was a house built on Lot Twenty that encroached into the utility easement.
Okay.
So this happened several years ago. And we negotiated with the hydro to relocate that easement and clear the encroachment into their easement.
So in, in general, as far as subdivision roads go, is there a requirement that they avoid utility easements or utility easements can pass over roads and cross them and?
They generally can go perpendicular underneath the easement. The, the hydro does allow that. We've, we, it was proposed that we were going to cross the utility easement twice under the old plan.
Right.
And with discussions with AmeriMaine, we were able to eliminate that second crossing, keeping the, the proposed Strawberry Way all outside the easement. So the only road crossing under the utility is Grove Way.
Yep.
Because access to their easement is, is good for the utility companies, so they can get there with trucks and equipment and people.
But there's no line in that easement?
No, there's no utility line going over Strawberry Way.
So Strawberry Way kind of got pulled back, so the two, the easement and Strawberry Way are-
Adjacent to one another, but not inter, intermingled.
In the, in the corner of the property, the triangle shaped corner that you, you added to the?
To Lot Twenty?
Yeah.
Yes. That was also to take care of issue with where the house got built.
Was that like a setback requirement or just a distance to?
It got built on some of the, what was the remaining land of Jordan and Durr.
So that transfer has taken place, okay.
That transfer took place two, three years, three, four years ago. But that was a sale to an abuter. Nobody disagrees. That was not okay.
And, and then the, the road itself, the, the other modification of Lot?
The other modification Lot Twenty was Lot Twenty giving back some land for the relocation of Strawberry Way.
Okay.
That's why we're here now. Cause of the give back.
Alright, uh, other questions from the board?
It's a public hearing.
So does, I mean, the original plan, the easement is not at all on Lot Nineteen, but now it is on Lot Nineteen?
That's correct. You have Lot Nineteen still owned by Jordan and Durr.
And is there a house on that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. I was going to ask the same thing.
Although it looks like, is that a test pit that may be on the, in the easement?
Yeah.
On Lot Nineteen?
That's right.
Would that be something that?
I don't, the AmeriMaine doesn't care about a subject leach field underneath the power lines.
Uh, are there any questions from the city?
No.
This is a public hearing. I would like to open this meeting to a public hearing if any member of the public would like to stand up and make a comment. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What would the board like to do with this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the after the fact amendment to amended subdivision on us Guptal Farm subdivision. Plant file twenty nine dash one eighteen for Jordan and Durr Incorporated and Doug Kerr. The modifications resulted in the relocation of boundary lines around Lot Twenty. Tax map forty one slash seventy two. And the partial relocation of a hundred foot wide utility easement owned by AmeriMaine in the neighborhood zone.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there mylar's that need to be signed?
I believe we have mylar's to sign.
I do have mylar's tonight.
Okay, so I'm going to-
What?
Do you have one more?
One more what? No, we're done.
Is there a second? All those, all those in favor?